All right, welcome to the August 14th regular board meeting here at Whittier Elementary School. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Ms. Kullivitz, who you lead us to the pledge?
Let me introduce you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our first item is our public hearing. So Board, I need a motion and a second to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 25 budget.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. We have no comments, no one signed up for comments on the sheet, so Board, I need an approval to close the public hearing on the fiscal year 25 budget.
So moved.
Mr. Rutledge?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kullivitz. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Board members, are there any modifications to the agenda tonight? All right, hearing none. We have nobody signed up for public comment either, so we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Hamlin. So we opened, opened school today, actually, can I, I'm sorry, can I take one quick step back?
Sure.
Modifications to the agenda, we did add a closed session for tonight, I just want to make sure we announced that. It was related to matters involving an individual student, was not in the original posting, so I just want to modify agenda for that purpose.
And there'll be, there's no action following the closed session.
No action, no action to follow.
Correct. Thank you.
Yep. So, open school today, great first day from buildings that we're at, and I just want to start with a theme of gratitude. I'm gonna ask, certainly under our student ambassador reports, for them to share a little bit about their opening at our respective high schools. I'm gonna ask some members of our team to just share a highlight from a building that they were at today, but getting a school year started really takes a lot of people that have to make the system work, whether it's our business office and all the work that they did this year around registration, residency, all of those pieces, our operations department, you know the amount of work we did this summer, and so getting buildings ready, clean, ready to go, in really good shape, our tech teams, our transportation, food service teams, obviously ton of people that have to come together and make it work, and what I always say is that it just feels calm, and when it feels calm, it means that those systems are really working well together. So, I do just want to highlight a couple of things for you that are fun, so I'm gonna share one highlight from Longfellow, it was one of the buildings that I got to early this morning, and a, and a quick shout out, the staff at Longfellow were really excited to show me their library learning center, their PTA made a huge investment in their library learning center over the summer, did a lot of soft seating, a lot of kind of student engagement areas inside the LLC, you know that that's something that we, we did a couple of renovations of library learning centers, and again, I think just going through that, well, we didn't do a full renovation of that library learning center, and it doesn't need a full renovation. It was nice to see a PTA, PTA group come together and really support a project. Staff was so incredibly thankful, proud to show this space, so it was awesome. Alyssa, come all the way down to the end.
Hello, good morning, or good afternoon, good evening. I had the pleasure of going to Emerson this morning for their arrival, and it was Principal Katie De La Rosa's very first time being principal, and she did a phenomenal job. Students were running around, getting ready to say hi to each other, and I think parents were also just as excited to see each other, and they were introducing themselves to Principal De La Rosa, and she did a wonderful job, and it was just a very positive, smooth morning over at Emerson.
Go ahead, Matt.
Good evening. I had the pleasure of being at Sandberg today. Number one, it was an incredibly positive vibe there. The kids were excited, staff was excited, parents were excited also. They were really anxious to show me their new cafeteria tables. Those were purchased in tandem with the PTA, and Dr. O'Keefe worked out a deal with another school district, I believe, or park district, they were year-old tables, but they're in great shape, and it just adds so much to their eating area, they have their mission statement on, on the wall also, so there really is just an incredibly good vibe there at Sandberg. That's a credit to Ms. Bailey for sure.
Yeah, good evening. I, I spent considerable time at Lincoln today, and, and one thing that stood out to me, just, just being involved with the school for, for some time, they've spent the past couple years working on school-wide expectations around how students behave in all different areas of their school, and to see today, because I was in the lunchroom, I was out on the playground, I was in all those places, and to see students actually carrying those things out around safety, respect, responsibility, referring back to that, just to see that culture, incredibly smooth day from a student standpoint, but also from a staff standpoint, all of them, so really, really good stuff.
Good evening. I'm happy to highlight an experience I got to witness at Edison this morning, and so the Edison staff had worked last year with the Student Excellence Foundation to secure three buses. The Essential Needs Fund supported three buses for students that were not going to have transportation for scheduled pickup day. And so these three buses brought 33 students who were able to receive their schedule in advance of the first day. So when I arrived there during first period, there wasn't the usual line of students in the office waiting to get their schedule. Every student was in class, meeting their teachers for first period and with their classmates, so we were certainly excited and really appreciate the support from Student Excellence Foundation to make that happen.
Good evening. I started my day at South, and it's perfect because Mrs. Campos is here, so I spent about 45 minutes on the backside of the building, so the, where the drive is specifically where the buses drop off, so to get to see that was a good experience, and, and know how either challenging the area can be, or just how beneficial bus drivers who care about kids are, but what I'll say to Mrs. Campos and the team is, it felt like a party. It felt like they were happy to have kids back, there was music blaring, there was all kinds of confetti all over the place, they were handing out goodies to the kids, it really felt like, I felt like I was walking into a party, and I was there to just observe, so I can't even imagine what it felt like for the kids, so kudos to Mrs. Campos and her team.
Good evening, everyone. I was at Pleasant Hill this morning, and they wanted to pass along their gratitude to the Board. As you might recall, one of our big projects this summer was our physical security project. One of the big pieces of that project was camera installation at our elementary schools. Pleasant Hill in particular had some unique challenges because they have multiple playgrounds, and their playgrounds, one of their playgrounds happens to be pretty far from the actual building, so there's a lot of geography that needs to be covered with those cameras. So, we were able to work through all that, the footage looks amazing, the coverage looks amazing, and they're so happy and grateful for those new cameras on their campus.
All right, how about our student ambassadors? We'll go Carla North first?
So at North, it was also a very positive experience for the first day. I want to talk a little bit about kind of like the upperclassmen experience, so we kicked off the year yesterday with senior sunset, so it was really fun, you know, to get our class together kind of for, to kick off the year and to see everyone, and overall, I would just say it's a very positive environment today, I think everyone, it was kind of bittersweet, you know, for the, it was like our last first day, but it was really exciting, and I think everyone was really welcoming and really open to meeting new people today, lots of smiling faces in the hallways, and I think just overall, everyone was excited to go back and go back to the building, like positive vibes, like Mr. Biskin said.
Awesome.
North?
Hello. Today, I interviewed some of our underclassmen, and they told me that they were incredibly grateful of the maps our school provided for them, and it turned out to be very useful. And there was also a lot of staff helping direct them to their classes in the halls, like pretty much everywhere I walked through, there was always a teacher who could help them.
Awesome. Thank you. How about South?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I don't know if I'm close enough to this. Okay. Sorry. So, today was also, thank you, today was our kickoff of our year as well, as you all know. Again, building off of what Carla said, as well as what Abby said, it was a very positive experience for everyone there. It was definitely like, seeing everyone come together was great, and again, building off of what's been already said, it was definitely a very welcoming environment with the music playing, the lanyards with the schedules being handed out, and the confetti, as was mentioned, ahead of time. Also, we have our Tiger Fest, which is coming up at South, which is basically our event that highlights our sports and our fall activities, and it engages our student body in getting involved, which we do have a high percentage of students involved in clubs, actually, a very high percentage, and otherwise, going back to first day festivities, it is definitely nice having the staff outside welcoming us all in, welcoming us back to Tiger Nation, which is definitely, it feels very welcoming, and it definitely boosts student morale, I feel like, and makes everyone feel like they're a part of something bigger than just being in high school, as well as going off of what Carla said, with the bittersweet feeling, it definitely did feel like everyone, especially seniors, juniors, upperclassmen, were bonding better than before, because we all know it's like our last year with each other, so it's very bittersweet.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good evening, guys. So, pleasure being here tonight. Overall, solid first day. Everyone was a little groggy getting up early, included, but overall, great vibes, it was like stepping into a party, like said before. I just wanted to step back a little bit for something else that I think meant a lot to our school. So on August 8th, it was the freshman orientation at South, and South has a mentorship program, I think North has a similar program where upperclassmen mentor students, answer questions, just help them out, and then we meet with them every Thursday. And what they have been telling us, and from firsthand observation, is that they were some of the most social people and most willing to ask questions out of any class that we've seen so far, and I think that exponentially helped with everyone knowing where to go and no one being confused, and then it serves as undeniable proof that North and South have offered and continue to offer a safe and welcoming environment for the class of 2028, and will continue to do so for each upcoming class. Thank you.
Perfect. Although Max mentioned that we were a little groggy, it's kind of hard to be groggy with Mrs. Campos's party fiasco we got going, but piggybacking off of everything that everyone said, I would like to kind of go in the summer and the end of the year in review, a couple statistics for you, we had just short of 1,000 AP tests taken by Wheaton-Warnville South students with an 83% pass rate, so we're doing great academically, we're hoping to keep that up this year. Over the summer, we had 53 students travel abroad, whether it was in the Wheaton-Warnville South, Wheaton-North Iceland trip, or our own French trip, that they went all over Europe. We also had almost 100 students participate in summer bridge programs, just to get them prepared for either their AP studies, college application season, or just an additional freshman preparation session. And then we also, based off of our Five Essentials survey that we took last year, found that Wheaton-Warnville South students have a 97% confidence and respect rate in staff. So overall, we're having a really great time at South, whether it was the end of last year, coming into this year, we're on, starting off on a really great foot in a party environment. So, thank you to Mrs. Campos and my other ambassadors.
Awesome. Thank you for that, and thank you for, I think, great information, just quick kudos for the, the Board when we had our new staff orientation. Your student ambassadors joined us for that orientation, in fact, Carla was part of the, the welcome to our new staff, and, and I've heard so many of our new teachers that have commented on how meaningful that was to see the student connection into really their, their first day with us. We also had Heather Gordon, one of our teachers at Edison, came and was a part of that opening, and, and again, same thing, we, we certainly didn't tell them what to say in, in welcoming, we, we asked them to speak about the culture of the district, and uniformly, you heard it tonight, I think you heard it through that thread, there was this thread of how valuable, meaningful, and important relationships are in the, the culture of our district, and, and so it was one affirming, really, really welcoming, it was great to, to see. Two just final things that I want to mention, two other quick thank yous to community partners I've shared with the Board before, Outreach Center, that does incredible work for us, both out of the Carroll Stream Outreach, but also the Warrenville Outreach, has launched the new program this year, Johnson Elementary School. It's the first time ever that we've had a school-based support program through Outreach, going to provide tutoring service, support service for students and our families, and, and so we're so incredibly excited to, to see the outcome, I think I'd share with the Board, that is an incredibly generous donation that it took to get that program going, because they will not start it without at least a commitment of a three-year fund, and so that, that is, that is a value well over $100,000 that, that came in. And the last piece I just want to mention, because we don't do a lot with them, but Carroll Stream Park District, so Pleasant Hill Elementary School is sort of unique in that it sits in, in Winfield, so it has, we have a Winfield Police Department that services that school, but it's Carroll Stream Park District, and so Brian's been working with the Park District, and I just saw a flyer that, that went out, they're getting ready to invest in the park behind Pleasant Hill, are securing some community input, are partnering with us around trying to secure a grant that will support that work. We're going to make some investment and donation in it through a, a previous relationship we've had with the Park District, but again, just another great example of a partnership that's coming to life, so that's all we've got.
Thank you. Ambassadors, awesome job tonight for your first report, are you kidding me? That was fantastic. Max, you warmed my heart. Seriously, talking about the mentoring program and the connection between those kids, that's fantastic. Thank you. Appreciate the update. All right, we're onto the consent agenda. I'm going to read the items, as everyone knows. Acceptance of gifts from Franklin Middle School PTA, acceptance of gifts from Hubble Middle School PTA, acceptance of gifts from Wheaton-Warnville South Tiger Paws, approval of statements of completion from the Regional Office of Education for Pleasant Hill Elementary School and Edison Middle School, approval of occupancy permit for DuPage County Regional Office of Education for Wheaton-North High School, approval of resolution approving travel, meal, and lodging expenses, approval of resolution authorizing intervention in property tax appeals, approval to purchase high school fitness equipment from Life Fitness, approval of master tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with American Capital Financial Services, Inc., for the purpose of purchasing high school fitness equipment from Life Fitness, Life Fitness through Sourcewell, approval of commercial lease agreement with DuPage Technology Center LLC for transition program at 100 Bridge Street, Wheaton, Illinois, approval to declare surplus assets and lease of driver education vehicles, approval of capital projects, summer 2025, approval of dark trace cybersecurity monitoring software, approval of bills payable in payroll, approval of minutes, July 10, 2024, regular meeting open and approval to destroy recordings of closed session prior to March 2023 as allowable by law, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Board, are there any items members want removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, just three thank yous, you have three very generous gifts you're accepting from Franklin PTA, Hubble Middle School PTA, and Wheaton-Warnville South Tiger Paws, we couldn't do what we do without the support of those groups, so thank you. A lot of items that are under your consent agenda, while they're under consent tonight, just a reminder, we spent considerable time on a number of those topics with your finance committee and your facilities committee, so while you're approving them on the consent agenda tonight, just be comfortable with the fact that we've spent considerable time making sure that Board was, was comfortable with, with those items, and I'm certain Mrs. Campos can be pleased with the fitness equipment.
Excellent. Board, any questions or comments?
One question. On the statements of completion for Pleasant Hill and Edison, is that for all of the work that was done at those two buildings?
Go ahead.
It was for the construction work that was done for those two buildings, so not the playground, that's separate, but there was just some door work at Edison and Pleasant Hill, and then a little bit of concrete work on the backside of Pleasant Hill, for those specific items.
Okay, and then would there be other ones for other buildings coming next month?
Correct, yeah, we just haven't closed out on everything else yet.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, Board?
One question, and, and number eight, and then I want to give kind of my, our facility committee update on number 12, just a little quick update. Number eight, the, the fitness equipment, why was it so much for Wheaton-Warnville South versus North, in terms of probably the number of equipment?
The age of the equipment in general between both buildings, 17 years old, some of North's equipment just hasn't been used as much as South, so these were specific piece designations as determined by the department chairs in each building, so we didn't make a determination from the business office, each department chair from each building asked us specifically what would be the high level of what they would like to replace, and it just turned out that there weren't as many pieces in North this time around.
And then, on number 12, the capital projects for summer 2025, John and I met, the facility committee met two weeks ago, I believe, and, you know, in addition to the 2025 work, you know, per policy, we look at a three-year rolling look ahead, so in 2026 and 2027, very preliminarily, look at focus on roofing and flooring at several of our schools, and then also, a little bit of interest and probably more importantly, need on the stadium-related work, so we talked about possibly looking more comprehensively at a site master plan. I know there's some pressure with girls' flag football coming online that might...
It's not coming online yet, I just, it's a new sport approved by HSA, so...
So, we did take a, a broader look, you know, that'll continue to be tweaked over the next couple of years, but we looked comprehensively at that three-year period.
Thank you, Brad. Anyone else? Oh, yeah.
Just going to make the comment, I brought it up in pre-meeting notes, number eight, again with the high school fitness equipment, I really don't like to pay that interest, so I wish we would have purchased it outright, I'm not super sure, like, I think, to me, it's almost like a school supply, you know, and why it's falling in a category of spreading it out over five years, can you?
Plain and simple, there was no way to find $285,000 of room in the, in the operating budget for this year, considering everything else that we have. If we could have bought it outright, that's certainly one to bend the recommendation, but looking at a five-year lease to own makes it a lot more palatable from the operating budget side of things. If we were going to make some outright purchases, they would have been significantly less than what came in front of you, and the needs at both schools were significantly greater if, compared to if we were going to pare it back and buy a few pieces here and there. Plain and simple, though, considering where we're at with the operating budget and, and what we're trying to finalize for your final budget for next month, there just wasn't the room in that dollar space to fit it into the budget comfortably on the operating side.
Okay, thank you. And then I wanted to thank, I'm not sure who answered the question about the woodland property, but it was very thorough, so I appreciate that.
Just one comment, Angela, on that fitness equipment purchase, one thing we discussed at the finance committee was, I think exactly the reason you ask, we stated a desire to get some visibility to future purchases that fall below the level of Sherman Durgis' work, but significant expenditures like this, so that's hopefully something we'll have a little bit more advanced visibility to in the future.
Thank you.
All right. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kullivitz. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Our next action is the policy posting consent agenda, so a reminder, these are post, for post, approval for posting. There are four revised policies for approval to post for public review and comment tonight. 4.70, 5.130, 5.200, and 6.140. Board, are there any items that members want removed from the policy posting consent agenda? Hearing none. Dr. Schuler?
Now, these were reviewed with your policy committee at our most recent meeting, it was a recent edition of press, actually a pretty small edition of press, it only had those four policies, in addition to a few others that were five-year review with no change to them, so we, we certainly recommend that you post them this evening.
Great. Board, any questions or comments? All right, Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. So Board, we have three action items tonight. The first is action item one, resolution providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing $151,500,000 school building bonds to voters of Community Unit School District 200, DuPage County, Illinois, at the general election to be held on the 5th day of November 2024. Dr. Schuler, would you like to introduce the topic?
Yeah, we'd be happy to, so this certainly is a culmination of a lot of work in the district, actually stepping back, actually many years, all the way back to your 2016 development of master facility plan. In that 2016, 2017 master facility plan, core to that plan were significant infrastructure challenges that the district was facing, as well as some needs that were unique and specific to a number of your schools, including three of your middle schools, early childhood center. I, I want to just go back and, and kind of provide a little bit of context and history leading up to the recommendation that you move forward with referendum question this evening. So I mentioned back in 2017, one of the things that the Board of Education wisely did immediately upon identifying infrastructure challenges, was pass a new policy that began to invest at a clip of a little over $7 million a year in your infrastructure, you have not only met that policy requirement, you have exceeded that policy requirement since 2017, investing really significantly. A lot of that work has focused on elementary and high school improvements, and so that got us to, little over a year ago, refocus on middle school. So I don't want to say, or I don't want to state that we are fully caught up in all elementary or high school needs, but you have taken significant strides in addressing and closing your highest priority needs. You obviously built a new early childhood center for the district, you made a number of security improvements at the time through revamping your front entries across buildings, and that got us back to a focus on Edison, Franklin, and Monroe. I, I'm just going to state some of what I think are kind of the clear challenges that drove the planning process around those middle schools, this doesn't holistically represent everything that, that we addressed, but it's some sightline challenges in the building, just some hallways that move in kind of strange directions, make it more difficult to supervise students really effectively, we've got camera systems, door systems, some other security systems that are out of date, science labs, candidly, that are too small, need to be brought up to current infrastructure, we've got music spaces in those buildings that candidly were originally sized to the middle schools when they were built, they don't provide enough space, or in some cases, appropriate sound barrier between the two that allows ensembles to rehearse, we've got locker rooms and bathrooms that are original to the building, they've been well taken care of, but they look like they're original to the building, it's simply time. We've got some mechanical systems that again have run end of life, and I want to be clear with all of these pieces, does not mean that any of these pieces of infrastructure were not taken care of, they are well We've got some mechanical systems that, again, have run end of life, and I want to be clear with all of these pieces. Does not mean that any of these pieces of infrastructure were not taken care of. They are well taken care of. There simply is a point where infrastructure meets end of life, especially as you're talking about key systems. We've got some floors that have hit end of their kind of ability to be preserved life. We've got some accessibility issues and challenges across our three middle schools, both in terms of some of the programming that's been introduced at the school and just some of the core infrastructure to the building itself. And so we took those challenges, the board wisely, a little bit over a year ago, so at the start of last school year, took a pause and said, let's focus on community engagement. Let's understand how the community feels about the major project buckets that were identified. That community feedback happened in two phases, with the first being specific feedback around those project buckets, like infrastructure, mechanical, investing in science, investing in music spaces. And then the second round of feedback kind of took those initial buckets and the feedback from the community and put them into a couple of different packages. So it looked at, if we package the work in this way for this amount of money, how do you feel about that? And overwhelmingly, what you can see from the community feedback was the community supported addressing all of the needs that we identified, the 10 major project buckets. Also, interestingly, in that feedback, just important to note, there was not strong feedback or sentiment around not investing in the middle schools. In fact, there was almost no feedback through those surveys that suggested we should not make an investment. I think the discussion led to kind of what is the right solution. We've mentioned a couple of times, and this is going to be foundational to this referendum question, we have a unique opportunity in the district in that we are approaching the last year where Dr. O'Keefe and his team will make any bond payments in the district. We have one year left with any kind of bond payment, and so that frames a conversation in a way that allows us, and did allow us, to talk to the community about what does reinvestment in the schools look like in a way that will still see relief in that bond and interest fund. So there is no plan that we explored that will not see relief or decrease in that bond and interest portion of the tax payment. And so in 2024, after we completed this feedback, shared that with the board, you sent our experts back to work. Michael's sitting in the back of the room. Michael and his team did an incredible job of working with our teachers and our support staff at each of the middle schools, really going through iterations of concept plans to look at the community's plan and actually put it into some renderings and some concepts that would effectively address that. That's what got us to the concept plan that was delivered to you in June, that carried with it a target price tag of $151.5 million. I'm going to go through these just really quickly because the board has seen them. This is not new information. It was a part of that concept plan that was brought to you, but I think just important to remind, there certainly are some common elements that were addressed across all of the plans, music, music spaces, band orchestra, common space. And so, again, a lot of time really with the music staff at each of the building, understanding what good music instruction is looking like to kind of inform these designs. Science, again, I mentioned, beyond just the core sizing and infrastructure in science labs, building or designing science labs that allow us to take advantage of both the lab experience, kind of a direct instruction experience, and a modeling experience for students around the room is something that was really important to us. And so, again, you see that in the design of the labs that were brought to, a flexible space that actually allows for all three modalities of instruction in the space to quickly adapt to them. In our classrooms, so as I've been out sharing these plans with any group, any community group, one of the things that I always do, and I'll do in just a second with the board, is show a picture of the building with color coding, right? With the key being, if it has a color coding on that picture, it means we're touching that area of the building. We are addressing very holistically the needs across the building. One of those is in our classrooms. Also making sure, like I stated in science, that our classrooms become flexible learning environments that support modality, active learning experiences, and the type of work that we want to be able to do to support engagement of our middle schools. So I'm going to take you just through the three drawings very quickly. This is Monroe. Again, Monroe, single-story building, you're familiar with it. Major new addition piece at Monroe is that top-left performing arts wing that shows a new performing arts auditorium, very similar to Hubble, and three new music classrooms, band orchestra, and choir. Again, as I mentioned, there is very little of Monroe that's not getting addressed as you look across the buildings. Common key, the orange spaces are newly renovated science labs, similar to the concept that you just saw. All of the yellow spaces are regular classrooms that would get new finishings. New finishings means mechanical. It means lights, ceilings, floors, core infrastructure, furniture inside of the classroom. The pink space is the library learning center that kind of stays within its confines but gets renovated to better serve learning. And then up kind of in the front of the building, there's a green space that is our essentials program, provides a new renovated space that ideally supports our essentials program, the important, not only instructional but related service function that happens inside of that space, and a newly renovated student service office area that provides expanded opportunities to make sure that both health service, student counseling services are not only delivered most impactfully but are integrated inside of an appropriately sized At Monroe, again, I just highlight a picture of the auditorium from inside, again, showing a rendering that's very similar to the design of the Hubble auditorium, both in terms of size, seating capacity, with some slight modifications based on what we've learned. And again, a rendering of the LLC. One thing we did want to do with the LLC that I think you heard about from Michael as he presented it was actually provide a little definition of that space. Well, it's an open area inside of the building, and you cannot completely close it off. You wouldn't want to close it off. We did want to use some small group, kind of glassed-off instructional spaces to provide a little bit of definition. Edison, two-story building, major new feature at Edison is an expansion of the physical education space. That's the blue area down in the bottom that both expands it out, kind of repositions the orientation of that gym. That does a couple of things, allows us to capture actually two potential additional teaching stations inside of Edison because you have a gymnasium that can be split for teaching purposes, plus you capture a fitness room that doesn't exist inside of that building. There's a small expansion at Edison up in the light pink area. That's the performing arts area for some practice spaces. It sits immediately adjacent to the band and orchestra spaces that get renovated kind of inside. Auditorium stays same place at Edison, as it will at Franklin, but gets renovated to bring it up to kind of modern acoustical lighting standards. Really, really important to make sure we can continue to deliver. Key element at Edison is that up in the front of the building, all that kind of light and darker green space represents a renovated student service area and wing. So again, right sizing, health services, counseling services, and again, co-locating them to make sure we optimally support student needs within the building. You see the renovated science labs on the first floor here at Edison. When you go up to the second floor, I would call it a minor modification, but I don't think it's a minor modification in that currently the hallways at Edison kind of stop where your library learning center starts. And so we're actually taking that hallway all the way through to provide both good student sightlines through the building, but student mobility through the building by actually just repositioning, kind of squaring that hallway area. Up on the second floor, you see all the renovated classrooms of the yellow spaces, library learning center that stays inside of its confines but gets a renovation, and then one more performing arts area. That's the choral area at Edison that's up on the second floor, kind of stays within its current area but gets renovated, similar to the new spaces at Monroe and what you'll see in just a second at Franklin. Again, just a couple of visuals. I'm showing you the gymnasium. You saw some of the common areas at Edison, so I think this is the only visual that we have embedded from the concept plan, but just showing that expanded area. Franklin, three-story building, major new feature is the performing arts wing that's to the northeast area of the building. That's the light pink, new band, new orchestra, new choral, new drama space inside of there. Building that new space that not only allows us to appropriately size and address acoustical student needs within that space, but it also actually allows us to significantly address student mobility throughout Franklin. That is the one big building where you have a lot of hallways that just go to places and either stop or go and start kind of zigzagging. So it allows us to actually straighten out that student movement through the building and get those good sightlines where the current band and orchestra performing arts spaces, that's that darker pink space in the middle, that's a new two-story library learning center that has a connected set of learning stairs that allow us to access this space both from the first, or the main, and the second floor, where a number of your classrooms are that you'll see in just a second. I think that's a super cool design of that space to, one, very functionally connect two levels of learning within the building, as well as just really make that where it needs to be, which is kind of the center point of that building. Still capturing a little courtyard to bring some natural light into that space, which I think was great design in there. You see in the bottom-left, new student services area, again, allowing us, as you saw in the other three buildings, to both expand, consolidate student services, co-locate, make sure that they are right-sized. Where the offices used to be, you see new exploratory spaces or labs. You're going to hear this year about some work that Melissa and her team have done with our middle schools on doing some redesign work around our elective program. These spaces are designed to support that curriculum work that's going to come to you at the same time, really give us good, flexible exploratory spaces that allow us to serve now and future needs within our elective program. Second floor, or top floor at Franklin, you see four of the science labs, a number of the classrooms. Actually, a number of these classrooms are right-sized to get them to standard that we need for a middle school classroom. There is a second-story gymnasium that stays in place, gets renovated. You see that second-floor connection to the library learning center. And again, here's where you see a good visual of why that two-story piece to connect to the classrooms that are up on this level and will be accessing library learning center. And then lower level at Franklin, you see two science labs and the classrooms that support that. So I've envisioned this as a grade-level area. I think sixth grade is actually down on this level at Franklin, so the two academic spaces that'll support them. And again, this is a visual, is if you're looking up toward that set of learning stairs up to the second floor of the library learning center inside. So the final plan, what does it do? Again, I mentioned some of the buckets of work, really three main anchors that I'm going to leave the board and the community with that this plan addresses. One, improve safety, security at our middle schools. Does that through focus on sightlines in the hallways, building layout, camera door entry systems, some other tech solutions. Two, ensures healthy and accessible buildings for all students. Does that through addressing critical infrastructure, mechanical, air conditioning, accessible entries, building spaces throughout, such as locker rooms, bathrooms. And three, probably most important, is that it's providing our middle school students with the learning environment that they need. We're doing that through science labs, right sizing, addressing science labs, music spaces, classrooms across the building, library learning centers, student service spaces, special education areas and programs, and physical education athletic spaces. So we are addressing, encompassed in, kind of those sub-bullets are all those 10 major project buckets that the community told us they wanted us to focus on and support, but high-level anchor, safety, security, healthy, accessible learning environments, and 21st century learning for our students. So final plan, again, we've already shared, that cost $151.5 million. We've been working on with full board and finance committee, the funding plan that sits behind it. Your finance committee feels strongly that we should address this through the two 15-year bond scenarios. So remember, we were focused, kind of got narrowed down at the board level to two options, looking at a 15- or a 20-year bond repayment, two issuances. They feel strongly in that 15-year double issuance. Significant savings in terms of interest cost. I think the finance committee was comfortable in playing out a number of scenarios that, one, as you look at projection of interest rate, I think we should be headed in a right direction, but even if for some reason things were to change, you still have cushion in that interest rate. You will not wipe out what is that reduction in the bond and interest fund to taxpayers. So as we've continued to say, you will see that tax decrease. You will. We've got, I think, some, I guess, when I say cushion, meaning perhaps volatility that might kind of redirect that, you will be okay. So that will be their recommendation. And so the ballot question that's on the resolution, we're going to ask you to pass this evening, or recommend to you that you pass this evening, is listed up here. Shall the Board of Education of Wheaton-Warrenville Community Unit, School District #200, DuPage County, Illinois, construct additions to alter, repair, equip, and improve the sites of Franklin, Edison, and Monroe Middle School buildings, including constructing safety and security improvements, updating infrastructure mechanical systems to improve efficiency, improving special education spaces and accessibility, updating science classrooms, improving music spaces, completing technology improvements, and renovating instructional spaces, and issue bonds of said school district in the amount of $151,500,000, and for the purpose of paying the cost thereof. Last slide that I have, just in your deck, just projects forward, obviously, the action in front of you this evening is to consider a resolution that would authorize this question. If you do this evening, we will immediately move into an information campaign. And so there is a QR code up here. That's a QR code that's going to take community members to the section of our website where currently all this information is housed that would migrate over into an information messaging component of our website related to the referendum, obviously, following the vote. We will move into that informational messaging campaign, informational messaging sequence, and we have mapped out a whole series of opportunities for town hall, continued feedback from the community, and we've got that link up there. So I'll stop, certainly answer any questions if the board has them, but strongly recommend this evening that you move forward with this.
So first thing we're going to do is, Mr. Long, serving as secretary to the board, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition of issuing $151,500,000 school building bonds to the voters of community unit school district 200, DuPage County, Illinois, at the general election to be held on the fifth day of November 2024.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments? I'm sure there'll be a few.
All right, I'll start off. So I don't have any questions, but just a comment, and I'm glad you started off with talking about the process, because that was the thing that I wanted to talk about the most, is as I thought about, you know, this question, it's an important question. I really thought of all of the work that went into this, and I know that there are community members tuning in for the first time, or community members that were listening to this meeting that, you know, as part of their due diligence. And, you know, sometimes it might seem different that there's, you know, a presentation and, you know, that options aren't considered, but I just thought of the past history and how long this has been going on, and really just wanted to highlight that. As you mentioned, this has been since, you know, 2016, we've reviewed this. I know since I've been on the board for the past two years, it's just been just about every meeting, we've talked about this and looked at different options, different financing options, and really, you know, finessed this plan that was both at the board level, and then when I started, I was in the facilities committee with Mr. Paulson, that we really talked about that. And so that was just something that I felt, you know, was important, that... And so that was just something that I felt, you know, was important, that I've asked so many questions throughout the process in those committee meetings and emails and conversations. And I think that community feedback was also really important, that this isn't, you know, our plan, but the community's plan, that we took that pause and really listened to what are the priorities in the community and what is the community investment. And so I'm excited to move forward and ask the community formally this question.
Similarly, not questions so much as comments. First, similarly on the process, you know, I agree with everything that Julie said. The community engagement portion in particular, I really appreciate how Jeff, you and the team shepherded us and the community through that. So the combination of providing educational materials, providing forums for the community to see and interact with our facilities, to ask and have their questions answered in person within those facilities, and then the surveying work that, one of my concerns is always, are we hearing from just the parents who are in the community members who are tight-touch with the district? Well, we made sure that demographically, we surveyed the entire community to get the input that you showed here. So I'm very proud of the process and believe that it puts us on a path to engage in work that reflects the will of the community. Obviously, tonight, as we vote on this, all we're voting to do is to present it to the community. We can't make the decision, it's their decision. But as we've gone through this process, there are a handful of points that have resonated with me in terms of why I'm supportive of this that I wanted to briefly touch on. You know, first of all, simply responsible upkeep of assets for the community. These are some of the most valuable assets in the community. They, both from a standpoint of educating our students, but also bolstering property values and just creating the feeling of the community we have. And if you don't take care of your assets, they don't endure. You know, spreading both the benefit of those assets across time, but also the investment costs across time, I think is important. And just as I know, many of us have children who have benefited from investments made two, three decades ago in these facilities. I think it's simply appropriate for the community that's here today to reinvest to support those generations that are to come. In terms of the benefit and the impact, as you touched on, curriculum needs have changed, and we need to adapt our facilities to meet those changing needs. Demographics and the needs of our students have also changed, and it was eye-opening for me when we talked about something as simple as mechanical systems and the fact that for a learner perhaps with ADHD who's sitting next to an old air conditioner heater that's a distraction can fundamentally impact their ability to learn. Those are things I wouldn't have naturally thought about or known. And so just learning through this process, the needs of the current students has been, I think, an important point that's led me to be very supportive of where we're going with this. The criticality of school connectedness, we heard about it from our ambassadors last year, we hear about it from Dr. Salagi as he talks about social emotional learning, and I really appreciated that the administration was able to pull some data that showed a correlation between stronger educational outcomes and those students who are highly engaged in activities. And obviously, these investments will benefit co-curriculars and extracurriculars that draw students into the community, school community as well. And then finally, I did want to thank prior boards for putting us in a position where our debt service is about to roll off. Very few districts are in a position to undertake work of this importance and magnitude without creating an adverse tax burden for the community. The fact that we're positioned to do this in a tax-neutral to favorable manner versus the current tax situation that the average homeowner faces, I think, is a unique circumstance. So I'm very supportive of presenting this opportunity to the voters.
Thank you, Mr. Jerpy. Anyone else?
I'll just hop on in. Eric, you did a wonderful job of outlining that, said it very well, very eloquently. Thank you. I think we started off, or I recollect, two years ago, kind of sitting, probably two years ago exactly, I was sitting at a meeting and I was a little hesitant and very nervous. I don't like to spend money, don't like to spend my money, other people's money, anybody's money. But it has, I appreciate the process. I think it's helped me to see and recognize, like, as you said, investing in what we have, like, keeping it valuable and being competitive for our students. I'm happy to see performing arts prioritized, special ed prioritized, and then just the updates that are generally needed. I'm still a little nervous that, sorry, I feel like the glass is half empty person at this table, but I'm a little nervous just, like, if it doesn't pass because we do have some things that have to be done. So I hope that, you know, I mean, that's something that's just in the back of my head. I'm supportive, part of me thinking and coming to anything, I was trying to think, well, I bet there's probably, in my head, I was thinking, there's probably a seventh of our constituents who probably wouldn't vote for this, but then I'm not even really sure if that's true because I, pretty much everyone I've talked to is pretty supportive. So that's been really encouraging to see, and it brings me a little sense of peace about the support we have. But ultimately, on November 5th, we'll, I think I'll just leave it at that. Thank you. I do have one question. So I think this may be coming, but the referendum campaigns do's and don'ts for school district officials and employees. So if we are putting together information session, like, technically you are employees, so how do you not violate this?
Yeah, because if, as you read through there, anything that I've presented to you tonight is actually information that we are disseminating. All we cannot do is advocate how somebody votes. Once you get to the vote tonight, then both as school board officials, as an employee, I cannot advocate for how somebody should vote on the question, but anything that I've presented tonight, what's included in the plan, how's it connect to learning in our schools as part of that informational messaging. So nothing on that section of our website violates the campaign piece. We do have a, we have a right, actually, we have an obligation to conduct informational messaging to make sure we convey all that Michael has presented to you all that your other professionals have put in front of you. We just need to stop short of suggesting to anybody how they vote when the question comes up.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Just to be clear, though, and I think this just falls under free speech rights of our employees, so correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, people can't advocate in their official capacity, so an administrator, a building principal, but they still have the right as private citizens when they're not on paid time, when they're not on school media to reasonably advocate, correct?
Yeah, they do, and I guess what it suggests is, can we maybe come back to this? I'm just rather let you get through your decision point on the question, and then I think we can cover that at the tail end if it's okay.
Go ahead. I think John has something.
Yeah. Go ahead. I just want to thank Jeff and your staff for the very, very detailed work that you've done in terms of getting information from our architects, our contractors, our parents, our students, our staff. You've picked up information from so many places, and I've seen the iterations of the drawings that have been refined and refined and refined, and I'm very pleased with the process that this has not been a snap decision. I think it's been adequately noted that needs have changed over the years. My son went to Edison and said the locker rooms were just fine there, but that was 40 years ago. So I'm happy to hear that nothing has been said about this being a result of any lack of maintenance. That's not the issue. Something's just flat, wear out. And I also am pleased to see the work on the music and other facilities for, I'll say, the artistic side of things and the athletic side of things because so much learning happens outside the classroom, and that's as important as what happens in the classroom, in my opinion. So I think this has been a very well-thought-out process to get to this recommendation. Thank you.
Dave?
So, you know, I want, the process I do think was good. The, you know, there was a lot of work, a lot of this was included in 2017, but it wasn't just dusted off and re-presented. There was a lot of pressure testing, a lot of iterations. You know, I've said it before, I think we need to keep these schools modern and up-to-date. We want to continue to be a destination district for families, for students, and for staff. And, you know, if we don't do this, then what are we going to be faced with five, 10 years from now? You know, building a new building, I mean, it's, it would be, you know, quite a bit more money. So I think, and I think our financial discipline has allowed us to get to this point, to be able to do it in a tax-neutral position with the timing of expiring tax debt. The past seven years of investment, you know, this will allow us to take care of the middle schools and still be able to do the necessary things on the upkeep of high school and elementary schools. And then, and also just the way we're approaching it from the debt servicing, to do 15 years, you know, so it lowers our risk, it lowers our interest. The two phases of payment gives us the flexibility because once we, once we get funding, we have a certain amount of time to spend those dollars. So, you know, there's, these are some big projects, so I think just taking all of that into account, it's an excellent process. And I think about things that happen in homes. You know, people put on new roofs, people put on new windows. Some people are in a position to pay cash for that, but many people, when it's a significant investment like that in their home, have to borrow the money, either take out a second mortgage, a home equity loan, and I look at this the same way. I mean, it's just not feasible for us to, well, first of all, we can't even do it legally because of our fund balance policies, but even if we could, to try to squirrel away $150 million, you know, we'd be looking at new buildings by the time we got there. So I, I think, you know, this is something we need to do, and like Eric said, it does positively impact our home values, or the alternative is it doesn't negatively impact it as if schools were to deteriorate. So that's my comments.
Thanks, Dave. I'm going to let Brad go last, I'm going to say something first. This is a very important question, right? And it's a question. We believe in it, I believe in it, but it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money, and I don't want that to be lost. We don't take it flippantly, it's, I don't want that lost on the community, it is a lot of money. And we came and asked the community, where do you want to be? Zero to X. And the, the community helped guide where we landed. It wasn't unanimous, it's not perfect, but I believe, if you look at the data points, this plan lands us where those data points told us to land from the community. But I don't want it lost, that it's a lot of money. I'd say, lastly, any question like this is a recommendation, but it does, it is up to our community to decide what they want to do. It's up to the voters, it's not up to us. We can only guide this to this point, shepherd it, and now ask the community to decide for it, to decide what they want to do. So I'm always about, we are aligned with our community, we're connected to our community, we're asking our community. And you know my feelings, you know my thoughts, but I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to ask the community. Brett?
All right. As you all know, this is what I do, 20, 25 years of this, working with other school districts, but I've never had the opportunity to say this at, in this seat. So certainly, this is a really strong, well-thought-out plan, and I'm going to support presenting this to our community as a ballot question in November, sounds like we're going to have a 7-0 vote. I just want to kind of cover, you know, why I feel this way in four points, and some of this is a little bit of echoing what we've talked about, but I want to go even a little bit further from 2016. I feel like when I first joined this board in 2013, we started this debt restructuring plan that's really enabled us to get into this position, so it's almost probably a 10-year process. So it's not just about buildings, but it's also about the debt management. So I think we're kind of in a position to make the first-ever substantial reinvestment in modernizing these middle schools while still, you know, seeing a reduction from our current tax levels and for the, from the debt service levy. Most districts, when they do this, they try to, they kind of time it the same way, but they keep things level, and we're still develop a plan that enabled that reduction. So I think that's a great advantage, you know. Of course, yes, it would drop to zero if we didn't do anything, but I think that would effectively eliminate the possibility of doing this work without a massive, massive future tax hike. And so the question is, you know, it's that old adage, if not now, when? And I could probably argue never, if we don't get to the point sometime with this plan. Number two, and I've talked about teachers quite a bit, but I think quality schools are woven into the fabric of a community, they attract residents that in turn attract businesses, but they're also necessary to attract teachers. It's different than in the past. We have to recruit, we have to compete for quality teachers, and these are where the teachers work. And you can't really talk about student learning if you're not considering the places where the students learn and where our teachers help guide that learning. So quality, safe, comfortable, up-to-date facilities are a necessary tool for those teachers. And, you know, I have the perspective of what other communities are doing, you know, so you look at some of our neighbors, you look at some of our benchmark districts that have made massive improvements in their buildings. Elmhurst is finishing a six-year, almost $200 million program. Barrington's finished a program that focused on their middle schools. I think they have another one on the ballot in November. St. Charles has made major improvements, they've modernized one of their middle schools. Downers Grove School District 58 is in construction on two middle schools right now. Hinsdale built a new middle school. So these are all communities that are very similar to our community, and they attract, you know, this is what, you know, people who want to move to these towns are going to look at schools and teachers are going to make decisions about where they want to work in. You know, look at India Prairie 204, they're going to have a big question on the ballot. Park Ridge, that I'm involved in, is going to be heavily focused on their middle school. So, you know, we're, it's almost, I don't like to say it, but we're almost have to keep up to be competitive and not only provide the best environment for our students and have those experiences, but also for the teachers. And finally, I think Eric might have said this, maybe it was Dave, but, you know, this doesn't only impact our middle schools, this is going to benefit all schools and all students. If we're able to do this targeted reinvestment in our middle schools, we're going to be able to keep investing in the district without having to redirect those Sherman Durges dollars. So this really is a plan that touches every school, every student, every teacher, so it's really a comprehensive plan. And then we talked about process, you know, how do we get here? It's been a very patient, thoughtful, intentional process. It's been a plan that's been finely crafted with, with the input and thinking about the taxpayers, the students, and the teachers. We've engaged so many people, the teacher staff, the community, multiple ways to seek their feedback. This is truly a bottom-up plan. This is not the, this is not the board's plan, this is the districts and the community's plan. And finally, I think this has been kind of said, but, you know, we've taken this as far as we can, and this is our chance to essentially turn it over to the community and give every voter a chance, should they choose, to have a voice in what we do. And so that's what this vote is, is it's the opportunity to turn it over to the community.
Thank you.
So that's what I would say.
Thank you, Brad. Any additional comments, questions? All right, there's a specific process we need to follow, so just be patient with me as I walk through that and read some stuff, and we have to take care of some administration stuff. So, "Board, I need a motion and a second to adopt said resolution as presented and read by title."
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kulevitz. After a full discussion thereof, board, I direct that the roll be called for a vote upon the motion to adopt said resolution. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Ms. Kulevitz?
Yes.
Ms. Leitner?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Robbitt?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So we have a little bit of paperwork to take care of now, so bear with us. Just three. All right. Are these signatures? Good. "The motion carried and said resolution adopted, approved, and signed in open meeting. I am directing the board secretary to record the same in the records of the Board of Education of Community Unit School District Number 200, DuPage County, Illinois." Good. All right, our second action. "Resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds of an obligation to be issued by Community Unit School District 200, DuPage County, Illinois." Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, and just remind you why you're doing this. So at the board at a, at a previous meeting-
So at the Board, at a, at a previous meeting, had authorized us to do some of the early design schematic work. Passing this allows you to reimburse yourself if the referendum passes out of proceeds. So if you want the ability, obviously, to fund the work connected to this project out of the referendum proceeds, you just have to pass this resolution. It's pretty simple.
Secretary Long, would you please?
Do you wanna add anything else? I'm sorry, Brad.
Just one quick structural piece to that. This is for a period of 60 days prior to today. So we are not reaching back
Great.
years and years and years. It's literally your commitment that you made back in June. Six, so anything through Perkins and Will or the consultants that are supporting you in this work on behalf of the community from today, 60 days backwards.
Yeah, thank you. Secretary Long, would you please read by title a resolution?
Resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds of an obligation to be issued by Community Unit School District 200, DuPage County, Illinois.
Board, are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. So I, I think I remember there were some fees incurred in February through May, so those will not be reimbursable. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's just six, from 60 days back today.
Okay.
That statute, that's nothing that we have control over from a board perspective or from a legal perspective.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? All right, Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds of an obligation to be issued by Community Unit School District 200, DuPage County, Illinois, as presented. So moved. Moved by Mr. Rutledge?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Upon, after a full discussion thereof, Board, I direct that the roll be called for a vote upon the motion to adopt said resolution. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. So a few more signatures now. The motion carried and the said resolution adopted, approved and signed in open meeting. I am directing the Board Secretary to record the same in the records of the Board of Education, Community Unit School District Number 200, DuPage County, Illinois. All right. Action item number three, approval of Vision 2026 work plans priorities for 2024, 2025. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so we presented these to the Board at your last meeting. Board members had an opportunity to give us feedback, you did, I really appreciate the feedback and the, the questions. I'm just gonna ask a couple members of our team to highlight any adjustments that they made or respond to any of those questions before we ask you again. This is not a required action item. We do it every year. I think largely it's important for our organization to know that we're aligned around the, the priorities that we have. So, but let's just go through, and then we can answer any other questions you have. So Melissa, I'll start with you.
Yes, I just wanted to address two points that are on the work plan that we got questions about. I really wanna add some clarity to two items. So the first has to do with our program review for special education and PISA at the elementary level. Just as a reminder, the resource program is where our students spend a majority of their day in general education, but they may engage in special education through a co-teaching environment or a pullout environment. And then PISA at the elementary level is a, a classroom setting where students are engaged in small group instruction for a majority of their day with a special education teacher, but they go to a general ed setting for parts of their day. So the reason why we selected these two programs only is, first and foremost, our staff gave us feedback that they wanted us to look at those two programs. And two, because we have new instructional materials for math and ELA at the elementary level, we really need to look at special education programming that's connected also to general education. So this is why we're starting with those two programs. And then Mrs. Hanson is gonna engage in stakeholder feedback about special education, and that will really shape future work, um, plan items. So the other area I wanted to add some clarity to was, there was a question about what a access growth report is. So as a reminder, access is the assessment that our multilingual learners take each year. It's measuring their English language proficiency, and so what we want to do is to create an easy-to-digest report for our staff that tells them the amount of growth that our multilingual learners are making year over year on their English language development, because really, it's that students exit the program in five years, and so we need an easy-to-digest report so that people know if they're on track for that or not.
Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, there was just two quick points, both centering around our work this upcoming year around our artificial, our work with artificial intelligence or AI. So one of our work plan goals outlined what group of the school community we'll be working with this year. So our goal is currently at 50% because that work plan goal has two parts. The first was last year where we did work with staff to educate them on responsible use of AI and how that would work within their, their, their workday. This year is going to address the second half of that work plan goal, which is responsible use with students. The second piece related to the AI work plan goal was to start to formulate some guidelines in writing about what responsible use of AI looks like. So these will be, there are drafted guidelines for acceptable use. We also feel that in the administrative procedure realm, there already is policy around acceptable use and plagiarism. So we feel that there's already existing language that would also apply to artificial intelligence.
Man, I think you had one change.
Yeah, so one additional work plan goal, the CEA contract expires at the end of this year, so we will be creating a timeline very soon to engage in collective bargaining with CEA leadership as we go through the school year.
Chris, anything? Melissa, anything on your end? So I think covers that. One other thing, actually, I can cover it on here, just 'cause a work plan, one of the work plan goals, especially now given vote that you just take, will be to carry out our information messaging work around the referendum questions. So in your green folder, the very last thing in your green folder is a document that has a draft mark on it that actually is called, it is our, our current draft of our information messaging camp. I'm not gonna go through this with you, but I would strongly encourage Board members, if you have some time, take a read through it. These are all of the meetings that we have either already scheduled, kind of preemptively scheduled or planned to schedule. So I guess just two things as you go through here. If you are aware of any community group that we're missing, that you think it would be beneficial for us to reach out to and get scheduled, we will get them on this, this document, which you'll see is we've got a whole series, I think, to date, we've already got, I think, I think it's probably 40 or 45 meetings identified over the, the next couple of months. So again, not, not for tonight, but I just wanted to give you a draft of this that we put together, understanding we wanna, we wanna hit the ground running right away. So please take a read through it, any feedback, any groups you think were missing, welcome that feedback. I think that's all we've got on the work plans.
Okay, Board, any questions or comments?
I just had one comment on the work plan that, in addition to making some tweaks in response to some recent questions, there were also a few things that I noticed that were identified strategies based on, you know, discussions we've had throughout the past year at the board level. So one was, you know, in the, some of the AI presentations, also doing a tabletop exercise on cybersecurity, and at HR Policy, we also talked about data retention. So I just wanted to highlight that I appreciated those suggestions that, you know, we've had on topics throughout the year I did see incorporated into the work plan.
Any other questions or comments, Board?
Yeah, just a comment. The, the work plan, I think, is very well thought out, and so I appreciate that. I think it's consistent with Board goals. And I know the work plan was the focus for tonight. The indicators, I guess I'm accustomed to sometimes seeing a little bit of a tighter correlation between the work plan and the indicators, so that we're able to, to tie the outcome of the work plan to, are we driving the district-wide outcomes we're looking for? And so this may be, maybe a, a future agenda topic, but I think maybe revisiting the indicators or maybe reeducating the Board on the indicators and how the work plans will affect certain ones would be beneficial.
Yeah, happy to, and I think you're probably right. Eric, I guess I would encourage us to state, take a step back and kind of do some reeducating, 'cause when the whole plan was put together, those were very tightly, coupled those with previous Board that, that originally established that, I think, as we moved into it, but we'd be happy to revisit that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, one, one comment that I had made in an email, and it's, it's not in here, and I don't know if it belongs in the CAC agenda topics, but I have some interest in phone usage in schools. You know, a lot of school districts nationally, locally, are exploring policy changes that would basically not allow students and teachers to use phones during the school day. Have some interest in digging into that a little bit deeper. I don't know what level of research or study that might be, maybe it's just something we bring to the CAC for discussion. Just a thought.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it is fair, and, and look, I'm not, not just pushing back around that, I do just one thing I wanna mention, and I appreciate it, 'cause I know that that's important. I think John, one of his pieces of feedback to us is, he went through and counted every strategy that we've currently mapped out for this year. So I, I just ask you to be cognizant through this year, and it's okay. We're gonna keep adding to the plan, we then will have to continue to start talking about what do we, what do we pull back. So that's not just a comment for you, Brad, 'cause you just made it. Just in general, I put that, that caveat to say, let's just, but, but I think it's a good CAC topic, I really do.
Okay.
So I was actually gonna bring up the exact same thing, and I wasn't sure, I didn't really think it, like, I wasn't gonna bring it up here during the work plan, I was gonna, topics for future discussion. I think, as Brad has said, not only individual districts, but entire states are moving towards this, so I think we definitely should be on top of it and have some discussion about bringing it to our district.
Any other points, questions? All right. Let's see. We are on, oh wait, I gotta, sorry. Board, okay, Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the Vision 2026 work plan priorities for 2024, 2025 as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Mr. Hutch, Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. So before we move to the committee reports,
Yeah.
I omitted Eric's request to talk about this a little bit more, so let's do that maybe now.
So that, you had four documents that just are the referendum do's and don'ts that we've provided, two of them from your attorney, two of them from a couple of our communications partners that, that provided them. They, they have similar information, just kind of repackaged a couple ways. Eric, I think your one question that, that pointed out is that what's really clear in all of the directive is not on school time, not using school resources. For some of our employee groups, school time is very clearly identified. That's not the case for an administrator. And so that is a much grayer area in terms of, certainly for, for any administrator in this room, for our principals, we don't really have work hours. We work when we need to work, and so we, we've covered that, just so you know, I covered that in, in great length with our administrators and our back to, to school piece, but, but that is really just not on school time, not with school resources. Administrator is probably the one area where we have to be most careful in the fact that there really isn't such a thing as work time and non-work time. Clearly, for you as a board, away from the board table in an individual capacity, you have far more flexibility, you do not here at the board table. This is where you're doing your work, and so there can be no advocacy at all at the board table or using any of your district-provided resources, email, any technology, right? Beyond that, you have some, some greater latitude.
I, I'd just add some experiential guidance, I guess, is what I would say. Remember, there's a plan in place, a communication plan in place to share the information. So I'd always kind of pivot back to that and always, you know, make sure we're aligned with that. That's really important work, with a lot of people doing some, you know, some, some very careful and thoughtful outreach and information sharing. I'd say secondly, and just, this is very tactical, but it's happened before, please make sure if you're using email that your email address is the right, is not a school district email address. You know, it's very easy to do, especially if, as it gets to reply, and just be very careful of that. So those are the two pieces of guidance I have, just experiential.
I'll add one to that.
Okay.
Social media.
Yeah.
Right? So we all, in some fashion, use social media, so commenting on a post, even as far as liking a post, I would just steer clear of that 100%.
It's a fair point, it's a good point, Brad. It's, it's hard, right? It's very hard, and it's just caution is the better, better choice. All right, committee reports. We have three committee, we had three committee meetings. So first, Board Facilities.
I kinda talked about that in the consent agenda. And any other action items?
So I mean, it was on August 1st. We had a Board Finance Committee Report on August 8th. Mr. Long?
Yeah, so there were six items on our consent agenda that we did cover. Just a couple of comments. On the intervention of property tax appeals, that's on commercial tax appeals. So that is when a business or a commercial property is appealing their tax bill, then we have an attorney representing us to challenge it. We, we do not, as a matter of practice, do that on residential appeals. So that's just some clarification on that. And let's see, we covered the fitness equipment, I think. On the vehicles for driver's ed, you know, our lease payment is going to be a little bit less than what we spent last year in repairs on the 2014 Focuses that we currently use, and we're going to 2020 with the new Trailblazers, little bigger vehicle, which is safer and more, you know, that was based on consultation between Dr. O'Keefe and Administration and the buildings. And, sorry, yeah, the last thing was on the, the Page Technology Center for Transition. You know, honestly, I didn't realize we'd only been there, we've only been there eight years, but the lease is three years with a two-year extension, so that allows us to, you know, to look at how that building is utilized. We know special ed is a population that's growing, and so it gives us some flexibility on the backend to look at other alternatives if that becomes necessary. Yeah, that's it, I think I said what I needed to say about the
Thank you.
school project.
Thanks, Dave. And then we had a Human Resources Policy Committee in August 1st. Ms. Kolevitz?
Yeah, so the latest issue of the updates to policies from press came out, and we reviewed those and approved those for posting earlier today. And then part of our committee's duties are also reviewing our policies on a rotating five-year basis, so we review the ones that were up for review as well. And then last, we had another update on the social media guidelines and digital communications document that was rolled out to staff, and learned about some of the new communications tools. One specifically, app called rooms that we're gonna be utilizing in conjunction with this plan.
Thank you.
I do have one more thing.
Sure.
The monthly financial report. Jordan is spearheading using a new page with the software tool, which is not, I don't think is that important, but it's got some graphs on there and some representation of numbers where we are, kind of year-to-date. but it's got some graphs on there and some representation of numbers where we are kind of year-to-date, fund balance and so forth, as well as projection. And so it's, besides all just being pure number data, there's some graphs in there now that, you know, are meant to help us digest that information a little easier.
Yeah, thanks. Good call out. Appreciate it.
Can I comment on it? I was going to do it a little bit later, but can I comment? First off, I like it. It's a little hard to really understand the difference between page six and eight and page seven and nine. You really have to do some investigative work to see what the differences are. So point there, and then I think it would be helpful to have some kind of executive summary, maybe written at the beginning of the report, that we could kind of summarize everything and point us to what you want to highlight. It can be short.
You two can get together and chat about that.
Well, maybe it's a good idea for either a reporter or committee of the whole item just to do a quick overview of what's in there.
We can put that on future.
Jordan or Dr. O'Keefe.
Yeah, we can put it on future items.
No, but I like it, and thank you. Just continued refinement.
Any other reports from Board members? All right, we have four written reports that were provided to the Board. They're on the agenda or attached to the agenda online.
Three. Three.
Okay, we have three reports written that are posted. One is the monthly financial report. Second one is our Freedom of Information Act report. And our third is the Board Communication Log. So make sure you plow through those. We're on topics for future discussion. We have two so far, the fiscal year '25 budget, and then our Citizens Advisory Committee Agenda Topics. So Board, are there any other topics you want considered for future? So we put a phone. How do you want to handle that? Because there was a lot of things flying around. Do we want to add them here or note them?
I would prefer that that conversation start out of CAC. Let's get a little bit of feedback, and before, I mean, I understand the interest from the Board, but I guess before we kind of move that to a board-level discussion, let us do a little bit of background on that.
Great. So Board, our next regular meeting?
Sorry. I have two things on that. I was at the CAC where we talked about finances, and I thought that was a really useful discussion. I think you sent an email of the proposed topics. I'm not sure if it was on it or not, but I thought that was valuable. And then I know in the spring, we talked about with CAC, we've had the unique situation.
Just clarify again, I'm sorry. Next meeting, we will talk about those topics. So this is just a topic that's going to be on the future.
Forget it.
Now that Julie's done something out of order, I may as well, so.
Excellent.
I think I missed my opportunity under Consent Agenda and countless other places, but the Bill's Payable Report, I just wanted to call out that the Finance Office Team, Business Office Team has updated the overview of the account coding to make it easier to read which are pass-through expenses. There's an account code 999. So I'll use Showfire as an example. The fees that are paid out of the district funds, but that are ultimately supported by activity fees. You can now clearly identify those.
Great. Yes, very helpful. Thank you. Anyone else? Going once? All right. Let's see, our next regular Board meeting will be on September 11th, 2024, at 7:00, and we're going to have that meeting at Hawthorne Elementary School. So we will be going into closed session. Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act Exemption 5 ILCS 120/2 Part C, Part 10.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Blatner. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, the meeting is adjourned to closed session, and there's no action expected following the closed session. Have a good night, everybody.